Aging, uh, Aging on Aging and Update.
Issue update.
Oh, issue update.
See, that doesn't happen on the front here.
Okay, issue update. Issues?
Sally.
It's funny, you should ask it. Issues? It's not, it's, it's not really an issue. I just wanted to let council know that we got a lovely letter from Carolyn Bartels, who is helping ACAD raise their money. And it's a lovely thank you note for the $2,500 that council gave to ACAD for their arts festival. And just, just to let you know, she has managed and is very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council updates? Okay. Jayla was here.
She's had a coffee fix.
I'm sorry, I had a coffee.
No, I can relate because, so, please, go ahead.
All right.
Is this being done for my benefit?
No, Brad, you want to?
It's for our benefit.
So we have, um, so we have handouts and we have a clicker here. My name's Jayla Sanchez Warren. I'm the director of the area agency on aging at Dr. Cog. In the interest of time, we really would like to talk more than just present, but we'll give you some information and then hopefully we can go from there. Y'all know about Dr. Cog. One thing that a lot of people don't know is that we are the designated area agency on aging and we have been for 40 years. So the area agency on aging provides services and this is in your handout, so I'm going to go quickly. We fund services. We're the regional planning entity for aging. And we are mandated under federal law to advocate on behalf of older adults and their family members. So this just gives you a snapshot kind of of the services that we provide, information and assistance. We get calls from people all the time. Mom's in a nurse, our mom's in the hospital, they say she needs a nursing home. She's going to be discharged tomorrow, I need your help. We're happy to do that. I had a tree fall in my yard. I'm 86 years old and I don't have the money to get it removed. And I've been told by the city that they're going to find me if I don't get it removed. My son moved in with me when he lost his job. And he's taken over all the finances. He started to drink and he's, um, and, and he's being abusive and I need help. You never know what you're going to get when you pick up that phone. We run the long-term care ombudsman program. This is a program that protects the rights of people that live in nursing homes and assisted living facilities. There are over 400 facilities in the metropolitan area. There are some wonderful facilities that are really great and some facilities that frankly I want to put my dog in. So it's really important if you know someone that's going into a nursing home or assisted living, assisted living particularly, to call the long-term care ombudsman. They can tell you the good, um, the strengths of a facility. They do really good at rehab, they're really great with memory care, they're really good at, um, dealing with young dis, uh, people with disabilities. And then they can also tell you the problems and the concerns that we've had. I want to talk about, this is a fairly new program, the hospital transitions program. We just completed a demonstration project with Medicare. This is a program that helps people not readmit to, to the hospital. So older adults are about 25% more likely to readmit within the first 30 days than the general population. Those readmissions cost a lot of money. We reduce the national, uh, so the national rate for readmission is at about 22%. We reduced it to 11%, so cut it in half. And we saved in 23 months Medicare and us as taxpayers over $7 million in that timeframe just by reducing those admissions. The elder refugee program, there is no other program like this in the country. And we partner with Aurora Senior Center, Aurora's Center for Active Adults, sorry, I can never get that right. And, and we serve elder refugees. There's, there's all sorts of programs for young refugees and refugee families, but there's not, there's not programs for elder refugees. And what we found out is a lot of elder refugees, you know, they, it's different for them when they come here. It's hard for them to learn the language, it's hard for them to assimilate. In their country, oftentimes they were revered and respected. They're the keepers of the, the knowledge and the traditions. And when they come here, they don't exactly know what to do with themselves. And the kids go off to work and the grandkids go off to school and so they don't have much of a role. There's a high suicide rate among elder refugees. And also, they tend to use services in the emergency room and not before that, right? So they're, the cost that they, they, they tend to cost when they use medical services, it's the highest cost medical services. So our goal is to help engage elder refugees, help them learn about services, help our service providers learn how to serve elder refugees because it's different. And hopefully we can reduce costs and improve service to the refugees. These are the partners. So we fund over 20 agencies to provide over 40 services in the metropolitan area. We, that's a big part of what we do is manage contracts. So they get state dollars and federal dollars, they tell us how they're going to spend them, some for transportation, nutrition programs, in-home services, chore services, et cetera. And we manage, we, they have to turn in monthly reports. We audit them, we manage the money to make sure they're using it appropriately. So challenges, what do you think, what is our biggest challenge?
More people than...
More than resources, absolutely. That, Brad's going to tell you this in a little bit, but the population, the elder population is growing rapidly, faster than we can keep up with.
Love those baby boomers.
Love those baby boomers, but that's not the only thing that's happening, right? You'll see, Brad's going to show you, people are living longer. So the combination is intense. And I can tell you, we're kind of like the early morning system at the AAA. We cannot keep up with the load right now. Our calls last year were 300 a month in just our call center and now they're 400 a month. We have waiting lists in almost every service category we have. So we have waiting lists. There are limited community-based services which increase nursing home and assisted living placements. When you can't get in, how many of you really, really want to go to a nursing home? Yeah, see, and, or an assisted living, right? You prefer to age at home with, or, or in the community of your choice. I'm not, I, I'm going to have to move, I live in the hills. I'm going to be one of those crazy mountain ladies if I don't move to town. But the needs are, are growing faster than the resources. Many needs have no funding. So a big problem, a big problem that seniors are dealing with are bedbugs. You know, Colorado is number six in the nation for bedbugs. If anyone's had experience with bedbugs, they're very hard to get rid of. They're costly, it's costly and it's labor intensive. You have to take the, the lining off your sofa, the lining off your mattresses, you have to move everything out. For someone in their 80s, that's really difficult to do. But if you have bedbugs, and it costs anywhere from $2,000 to $4,000 depending on, there's no funding for that. Why do we need funding for these kinds of things? Because something like $2,000 can keep a person out of a nursing home or an assisted living. This is what happens, if you get bedbugs in your home, you're not invited to the senior center. You're not invited to the congregant meal site. There's not anyone that's going to come and do in-home services in your home. And you can understand why, um, you know, places make these policies for their staff. But it's something that really is fairly easy to address in the scheme of things. But that, it's like a mountain that, that, that the older adult cannot hurdle. They just can't come up with $2,000 to do this and do all the labor that's required. We have uncertain funding. Our federal lobbyists right now, I was just telling me that sequester is going to impact us once again, our federal funding. And to be prepared for anywhere between 7 to 12% cuts. Last time we got 13% cuts, that means 1,200 meals on wheels weren't, we, we were not able to provide. It was over 7,000 rides to the doctor, to the grocery store, those types of things. It has real impact immediately on people's lives. So how does a community respond? And you're going to see more about the growth in demographics. Did you know about 1 in 5 people don't drive? Men outlive their driving years by 10, or by 10 years and women by 7. Uh, switchered around, sorry, the other way. And so what do you do in that timeframe? What do you do when you can't drive? People will say, "Drive?" I'm like, "Yeah, I know, drive." Wonderful ladies and, um, and Bennett. They said, I said, "Well, how do you, you know, we only provide transportation once and it comes into Aurora once a week." I said, "Well, what do you do when you need to come to Denver or, or, you know, Aurora if, if it's not on, on that Tuesday?" And they said, "Well, she drives because she has the best reflexes, but she has macular degeneration." So I sit on this side of her in the back and, and she sits on the other side of her and we all drive together and you, "Oh, wow." And part of you is wanting to say, "Good for you, pulling yourself up by your own bootstraps, right? Making it work." But then the other part is like, "Yeah, we shouldn't have to do this." There are a lot of physical barriers that impact older adults more than others. Housing, y'all know, right, about housing, you hear it every single night on the news. Housing is dramatically impacting older adults right now. And I'm talking about white women, 70 and older, whose rents have gone up $200 or $400 a month and they can't afford it anymore. These are not chronically homeless type of people. These are people that you would not expect to be homeless and they're living in parking lots, they're living on campers on stilts, they're living in campgrounds, they're living in hotels. It's a crisis right now. And there's no, I mean, I, I can't see anything short-term in sight that's going to help. Now, we can put all of these people in nursing homes and assisted living, we're going to spend them down. These folks have money, $1,000 a month, they could pay for housing, but there's no housing available. So we'll have to spend them down into poverty so they can get on Medicaid, so they can get into a nursing home or an assisted living. What we know is that civically engaged seniors are happier seniors, they're more productive and they contribute to our communities. Who's volunteering in your community? Who's volunteering in your schools, in your libraries? Likely a majority are seniors. We want to continue that, we want them to be engaged. Brad's going to talk to you about demographics.
Just to let you know, we're kind of running behind.
Sorry.
Okay, well, I'll go, and I'll go quickly. I think a lot of these folks understand sort of the aging demographic story. It was mentioned sort of the swell of baby boomers that are, that are, that are coming into our region, but everywhere else. And so you can see what that looks like in our region. So by the year 2030 or so, 1 in 4 people in our region will be over the age of 60 compared to 1 in 2 historically. So everyone looks on the right-hand side of the chart, the real story is on the left-hand side. The fact that we've never been through this before. This is, this is a brand-new experience for this region, for many parts of the country to understand what it means to be an older community. So I'll skip a few to show you kind of some, some quick headlines. So over 60 is when we tend to sort of, as a marker that we use because that's when people become eligible for our services. But over 75 is really the real benchmark. That's when people just really need some level of care or support to remain in their home or community. And look at our region, a 65% increase in the over 75 population just in the next 10 years. I promise you, the funding is, we are not going to see a 65% increase in funding to meet the needs of that population going forward. And this is not just about the baby boomers aging. This is about aging as just sort of the reality of what our communities are going to have to deal with going forward. So this is national data from 2010 to 2050, just the percent increase in population by, by age cohort. So you can see really all the action is on the, on the older adult front. This cover of Time Magazine basically asking the question, "Could this baby live to be 142 years old?" Frankly, science and medical technology is allowing people to live longer and longer and longer. The reality is that the physical and cognitive limitations that come with aging are still going to be something that we have to deal with, right? So communities are simply going to have more people that are older for a longer period of time. So what communities think about in terms of providing services for folks is simply going to have to make that adjustment as time goes forward. And these folks are going to remain in their communities. The Denver region and the Rocky Mountain West in particular tend to have people that grow, grow old and want to stay in their communities. Nearly 90% of people that responded to a survey Dr. Cog put out a few years ago said, "Not only do I want to retire in the Denver region, I want to retire in the community I live in today." They are not going to hit 65, 70, 80 and decide to move to Arizona or Florida. They're going to look to make arrangements to stay in their community that they live in today. And, you know, this is, just sort of tracks household income. 50% of household in, of folks over the age of 65 basically earn less than $45,000 a year. There aren't a lot that are sort of, I mean, 15% or so that are at that poverty level and below, but there are a lot of people that simply cannot afford to do sort of your private pay version of care and support. And Aurora in general sort of tracks the larger state as well.
So we know that healthcare costs are skyrocketing, the demand for community-based services is going up. We know that AAA services, community-based services are cost-effective and that older adults prefer to remain in their community. So this shows the kind of economic impact of a Medicaid population. So the, the blue line is the, the state revenue line, green is education and yellow is HIC-PUF or healthcare policy and finance, otherwise known as Medicaid. Look at, if we keep on going on the path that we're going on and there's a lot of interest in getting people on Medicaid because we get a federal match, but that's not always going to be the case, we can't sustain this path that we're going on. And let me tell you, this isn't just an, a AAA issue or a human services issue, this is an everybody issue. If you don't care really, okay, old people, yeah, whatever. But if you care about any of those projects that the general fund will provide, Aurora, then you need to be concerned about this because it will impact tremendously what the state is able to do in the future. We need to figure out other ways. How do we keep people in the community? How do we keep people off of Medicaid? How do we support people where they want to be and, and help them live as successfully as they can with... So you can see this has changed a little bit, we're about 400 now. But our services cost about $400 a month. And that's meals on wheels, five days a week, two transportation trips in a month and two in-home services compared to a nursing home. And I can guarantee you, some people need this nursing home, government dollars and government dollars. But not everybody needs a nursing home. And every single day, my staff recommend people go into nursing homes because there are no community options. So really, we ask ourselves a lot of questions, but really it's how do we help, how do we get this word out to everyone? How do we help local governments prepare for this aging population? Because it impacts you dramatically as well. How do we slow the growth in Medicaid spending? Because it's going to have an impact on all the state.
I think you should stay there and maybe have a conversation.
So one of the things, you want to come just talk about Boomer Bond? One of the things that we're trying to do is help local governments prepare for an aging population. What does it mean when 1 in 4 people of your constituents are going to be over 60? What's it mean when you have a huge, an 85% increase in the 75 and older population? What does it mean when 37% of the population, or the 90-plus population grows by 37%? What does that mean for us? What does it mean for our transportation? See, the aging of the population affects all aspects of life. It affects tax base, there's fewer people working, there's lower property taxes if they, if they do the, what's a property?
Senior exemption.
Yeah, senior exemption, sorry. Older adults tend to buy less goods and more services, goods are taxed, services are not. It impacts workforce, it impacts transportation and transportation patterns and the kind of transportation that you need. If you're talking about open space, well, how do you make it accessible, right, for older adults? Because we want them to be able to walk in our community because that's how most older adults get their exercise. So Boomer Bond?
Just the 45-second version. That's, we realize that this is an overwhelming conversation for any local government to have. It is, if you, if you think of the real ramifications of this issue, you know, I have yet to find a staff person at a local government level whose job is to help understand how local government operations change with the aging of the baby boomers. Because it is so fundamental in terms of how it impacts everything. So we've created an assessment tool that we probably have, I don't know, nine or 10 local communities that are going through the process to ask that series of questions. How does this impact what we do in our, in our community? And what policies, programs and resources do we need going forward so that we can be that place where people can, can age successfully? It really is sort of the preventive medicine on the sort of community, Blake-based planning sort of thing. So we've created an assessment tool that communities can sort of walk through. That series of questions is to ask themselves, how do we become more age-friendly? And we've also created kind of online resource directory of best practices that are both national but also really locally based to help people identify programs and resources that can really help communities as they begin to have that conversation. What can we do to be a more age-friendly place?
What's cool about Boomer Bond is that communities have gone through it, have said, "Okay, so what are we doing well?" They've identified things that they're really doing well. And what is the low-hanging fruit? What are stuff that we have to do anyway? And it can have an impact. So we have to change our signage, right? So let's go to a, a bigger font size. Or we're going to do repairs in a certain corridor and so let's make sure we have appropriate curb cuts and that kind of thing. And then they are able to put in, they're able to understand what needs to be, have more resources and more time. And they put it in their comprehensive plan. And we have several communities that are putting age-related issues in their comprehensive plan, which is really exciting to me. I've been doing this a very long time. I think I'm celebrating my 28th year in the field of aging, 25 years at Dr. Cog. And it's so exciting to be able to have the opportunity to talk to you all because you all can make change happen faster than any other government entity. And, and you have to remember that those little changes that you make can really make a big difference. They, they're cumulative. So, uh, we'll just...
Questions? Comments? Go ahead, Sally.
Thank you. The one element that you haven't mentioned is families.
Yeah.
And I, I need for you, so I cannot understand, what is the role of families?
Families, huge, absolutely huge.
To me, that they, the children are the ones who should be taking care of the parents, the aunts, the uncles.
I think in, in the perfect situation, that would happen. But I'm an only child and I have four parents. My, my stepparents don't have children. My dad's disabled, my mom has chronic health disease, or issues. I can't do it all. I can't. I try, but I can't. There are many families.
Are you doing any at all?
Oh, yeah, I do a lot for my dad, my dad who's disabled, I, you know, I take, I mean, I have to take off work. I take him to the, you know, doctor's appointments, et cetera. But families are very important and we want to support families and help caregivers as much as possible. But for a lot of people, they don't have family in the area, people that they can't access. The lady is 86 years old, living in the camper on stilts. She's living with her disabled son and that's it, there's nobody else for her.
So in your, but in your, in your dessert, in your presentation, I would suggest that you include something that says 50% of families are going to be taking care of their children.
Yeah, you're right, and we can do that, right.
Rather than just totally ignoring the family.
No, no, yeah, and, and there are a lot of... And we have those statistics. And we do a lot of programs in the area agency on aging to support families.
To support the families.
Because we can't.
Right.
I mean, we don't want those families to stop helping because we can't absorb that.
Right.
We got to support those families.
A big part of our program is reducing the burden on caregivers, right? That transportation trip that someone can make to, to the doctor just means that's, that's four hours of work that sort of maybe a son or a daughter doesn't have to take off. That's the, they're getting high-quality care and it's reducing the burden on the caregivers.
Well, I took care of my dad the last two years of his life, he died of Alzheimer's and Parkinson's.
Yeah.
So I, I have real up close and personal experience. And I certainly, I, I would just say for the third time, please include the families in your presentation.
We will.
Thank you.
Sally, Erin, Molly?
Yeah, it's the emphasis on support for the caregivers is crucial because you could wear yourself out caring for...
Absolutely.
But it's crucial that that be a program element.
Yeah. Brad?
Yeah, my day job, I'm a paralegal in a law firm that does elder law. So we, there's no shortage of business for us on conservatorships and guardianship. So it is a lot of the kids, these 50 or 60-year-old kids of 80 or 90-year-old parents who are their guardian or their conservator now. And the whole process of getting them appointed, some of them are in-state, kids are in-state with the, with the, with the parents, some of them are not. But anyway, there's a whole, there's a whole industry trying to, trying to keep these parents at home and have somebody else take care of either their finances on a conservatorship or a guardianship where they can't take care of their daily living.
Right.
So there's a whole system in place to get that done as well.
Yeah.
Just, can I make one comment too? I look at the, this pilot phrase and the underway and complete. One of the things I don't know if you have looked at, and while it's not huge, but, but it is the refugee and immigrants, we do have a lot of seniors in those areas.
Yeah.
And when you talk about issues of learning and putting in comp plan issues, I think there's a lot that you can learn too from, from some of the refugees and immigrants too that are, while they have to assimilate into our way of doing things, but it's all in how you, you work with them to get them assimilated and...
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah. Councilor?
I find it interesting, there's a whole industry out there that's devoted to spinning off people's assets so that they go into the nursing home, it's the taxpayer that's paying it and, you know, and the relatives end up getting the money as part of the spin-off process. Anytime you have a government program that pays for something, somebody's going to figure out how to take advantage of it.
And there's certain reasons for that, councilor, yeah.
Also, I would like to know how you are working with faith-based organizations? And if, so if you could just, just address that briefly?
We have a, we have a faith-based project. It's been, it's centered in Lakewood. We have seven churches. What we realized is that the churches are doing much of similar work that we do, right? So they have a, a program that visits homebound people, they have a program that visits nursing homes, they have a program that welcomes new seniors in their community. They have constituent, I mean, they have congregations that are, you know, aging. And so what we did was train the staff of the churches on resources and giving them more tools. And we opened up our database to them so they could learn more. So we helped them help themselves, right? And then help support, we'd love, I would love to expand to Aurora. In fact, I'm having Reg Cox, who is the pastor at, in Lakewood, who's helping take the lead. He's, he's given me the name of someone in Aurora and I'm sorry, can't remember his name. But to do something similar in Aurora, because I think there's a huge need and I think that's a way we can reach a lot of people. We have to figure out ways, you know, it's not going to be all about increased money and, and we know that because the resources aren't going to grow as fast. So we have to look at every other way to, to try and figure out how to do this.
I was just going to make mention that senior help in Aurora is overly burdensome.
It is.
They don't have enough volunteers anymore because of this. But also I want to bring up the aspect that life is changing all around. It's not just this abundance of seniors.
Right.
It's young people that can't leave home anymore.
Right.
Because they can't afford to. So you've got parents that are in their late 50s with their children still living at home and taking care of their parents.
Absolutely.
So it's, we are more family-reliant now than we've ever been. And so I just want to...
Well, at least in the long, long time.
Yeah. I just wanted to mention that, you know, it's...
Yeah, it's, the demographic growth is all, I mean, we hear a lot about the millennials, but it's all seniors. I mean, look at all the demographic charts from the State Demographer, it's about seniors, it's the senior growth. Demographics, I mean, people don't like to talk about aging, they like to talk about new and young, you know, what the millennials are doing and how they're different. And they are different. And, and, and older adults are different than they were when I... And, and, and older adults are different than they were when I first started in my career, right? So they're different. They're more healthy, they're more active, they wanna be engaged. We wanna do that. We wanna help them do that.
And so if they're living in a livable, livable, walking community, that's a healthy aspect. Where you build senior, senior living, you know, units, where there's a park, and in that park you have exercise equipment specifically for seniors, and at the same time, you have the playground for children, because the interaction of the children with the, with the senior population is what's really needed, and it helps spark life and makes senior.
So we need lots of different options, right?
Yes.
For older adults.
And that's basically what I'm saying.
Because some people wanna live in gated communities and save it.
Right, I think there's a lot of issues, there's many issues, I think, that we could on housing, yeah.
Councilmember.
Just a couple of things real quick. I, I'm glad that you were able to come, because I, I think a lot of people in this room didn't have no idea that, that Dr. Cox performed this particular function. And I'm happy at your passion for it. I've seen it before, serving at Dr. Cox, and you certainly show it tonight. And then the other thing that I wanted to mention for people's benefit is that our AAA has received a lot of recognition for firsts, for bests, for a lot of things that we've done very, very well. So kudos to Jaylen, her staff, and all of Dr. Cox on this.
Yeah, we have an awesome staff. I, I really do want you to think of us as a resource, and know that this is available to you and to the people that you serve. So, you know, you get that call from a constituent that's unhappy about something, I got bad, you know, my, my, my husband's in a nursing home and I don't like the way he's been taken care of. You can call the AAA, we have a whole program to deal with that, right? And we get, councilman.
Someone who's made the resources.
Molly.
Yeah, I just, I just had an observation, we've been doing all this marketing and branding and TODs and attracting the millennials, I think we missed the boat statistically.
Well, you want the millennials here, because we need them to be at work.
Don't be, don't be surprised, though, if those, if those development projects actually get filled by people 60 years old and older.
Because the millennials want this.
Many projects around this region that have been built, thinking that they were gonna cater to millennials, that really, it's, it's sort of aging boomers that are in the nest, so they're actually filling those projects.
Especially since we have construction defects. Anyway, I just had to make that.
Thanks so much.
And I'm sorry, we, I know you, thank you, I, I really appreciate all the work that you do a bazillion years ago, I used to be on Dr. Cox, and, so anyway, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
Thanks for the time.
Thanks for coming. Okay, new market tax credits.
This, this came from M&amp;F, and I do wanna make a clarification. This, this did not come with a recommendation from M&amp;F, it was just, the committee agreed to move it forward so the entire council could hear.
And we'll be giving you the abbreviated version.
We've got 10 minutes, yeah.
In M&amp;F, sorry. This is a program that the city has never participated in. We became aware of it a little while ago, and we started doing some research into it to see if it was something we might be interested in participating in. It's a very unusual program. It went by the US Treasury, and if you boil it down, it's essentially like a grant program. If you get these allocations, you'll be able to get some money that you'll be able to keep. And you could use it to help pay for a project, or you could use it for activities and benefits surrounding where the project is located. The reason we are looking at the program is that we think it's another alternative to assist economic development activities. Essentially, it's another arrow in the quiver, and it's a program that is targeting TOD sites. So they have certain program criteria that changes, but one of the ones that they're interested in right now are projects located near TODs. Based on that, we, we thought we might see if it's a program applicable to Aurora. At the federal level, the, the program goal is, it's a targeted program, and it's targeted for low-income areas, and the program is meant to stimulate investment in those areas. A lot of times, there's not enough capital, it's hard to get financing, and the purpose of this program is to help facilitate that. And again, and you've probably heard this a few times, but it's a mechanism that can help fill the gap, to get projects done. Here's a history of the program. The program was created in 2000, took a few years for it to get started, and then here's kind of a chronology of what the demand has been historically and what the allocations have been. So it's been pretty heavily oversubscribed throughout its history. 2014 is kind of what we're interested in trying to get in terms of allocation. There'll be $3.5 billion in tax credits available, and, and that's what we're trying, trying to get. This is from last year, and it kind of gives you an idea of the types of projects that they do. It's a very broad, diverse group of projects. Here's some projects that have been done locally. And again, the, the program's been changing over the years. Initially, it was purely economic development, now it's getting into more community benefit. How does the project not only help the developer, but how does it help the surrounding community? The, the project that we're looking at is, we think there's an opportunity to get some allocation, to get an award for the Fitz Village Hotel Conference Center. It's, and again, there's a lot of check-the-boxes, and so we just kind of went, we checked the boxes, and we seem to have checked a lot of them. And so that's why we're interested in going after this. It's gonna be located in a, in a distressed census tract, it's gonna create new jobs, and then also, it's a positive aspect if it's near a TOD. What got us interested is, we are targeting possibly 12 million in tax credits, which is an allocation from the US Treasury. And of that, that would be converted into about $2.5 million in cash for the city. And again, we've been talking to a lot of different folks, it's a new program for us, and we're getting positive feedback as we move forward. But again, it's a very, very competitive program. So what are, what are the benefits? Again, we, we think it might be a program to help us in economic and community development projects in certain targeted areas of the city. It's a very popular program with developers. And also, we think, again, it can be replicated. If, if we can do this near the TOD, at the Hotel Conference Center, there might be an opportunity to replicate that in other stations along light rail. And many of those stations are located in severely distressed, low-income areas. So the big challenges we have, it's, again, it's a very competitive program, we've started on the previous slides. It's always oversubscribed, it's a very complex program, very complex. And there's a lot of transaction costs to get it done. You spend a lot of money for attorneys, you spend a lot of money on people who have experience with the program, and a lot of those costs can be part of the cost of the transaction. So what happens is, you know, when we give you that number of about $2.5 million, that's netted after all of these costs. From a timing point of view, a lot of people have been shopping their projects in the spring, April, May, they've been talking to people who don't have the allocation yet, but people who they think might get an allocation. So people have projects and they've been kind of shopping it around. June, when the allocation is announced, the second item, that's when things really start happening. At that point, the allocation's awarded, and then the folks who are given the allocations will receive a lot of interest from folks who wanna participate in the program. And so June and July is when a lot of the allocation is awarded to other entities, and, and that's a very critical time, because it happens once a year, and if you can get an award in the June-July period, go ahead, get a written commitment, and then close the transaction by the end of the year. So the question for council is, is this a program that the staff should participate?
Have you done an overlay? Is there like three of our TODs that are in census tracts that don't qualify? Is that about right?
Yeah, probably four.
Maybe four?
Yeah.
And are we too late this year to get into this cycle? Looking at those dates, it looks like we're behind the curve.
No, we're, we're in the cycle. We hired a consultant, S.B. Clark, who's very familiar with the program, and we've been working with him for a while to walk us through it, and said, is this a viable project? They've been very positive about it. They've been in conferences over the last couple of months, showing this project, seeing if anybody might be interested, they're getting positive feedback. Problem is, you don't know until it's time to allocate, and somebody says, I'm gonna give it to you. But they have been shopping it around. Our approach in this is, we've been moving until we get to know. You know, all of a sudden, at some point, we go, no, it doesn't make sense for us, no, it's not a good fit, we haven't hit no yet. So we think, again, it's very competitive, but we're getting positive feedback, and so we could be able, you know, we would be able to meet that schedule. One of the advantages is, and frankly, we're kind of surprised that the project's eligible, but the Hotel Conference Center just happens to fit some of the criteria. Our concern is, we don't want anything to happen to the timing of that project. So if we did something like this, we would do it with the understanding that the project's still gonna go, it won't get in the way. And so it just so happened, from probably a coincidence, that, you know, we have a right project that's at the right point in terms of being developed, that is attractive to folks.
So, so when did the federal government be able to move as fast as you're letting us believe that they're moving? I mean, we're in the middle of May, and have you put anything to writing yet, even in pencil?
Yeah, we have.
Okay.
Yes, we, we.
All right, that makes a little bit more sense.
We have an RFP, it's gone out, sent it out to some banks, sent it out to six banks to see if they wanted to participate. Of the six banks, three came back and said, yeah, we think they might be interested in.
Real quick, I just wanna clarify for everybody again. The city is looking to get an award of the new market tax credit. The city is not directly applying. The CDE that Mike referenced in here is the Community Development Entity.
Yes.
They are specifically set up to apply. They are the ones that are applying for an allocation of new market tax credits. So when we say it's really complex, allow our M&amp;F members to nod. We showed them the, the chart of how this is set up. It's layers upon layers of bureaucracy and legal arrangements. It is a very complex arrangement. So the city is not the direct one applying, the Urban Renewal Authority is not the direct one applying. So we're just trying to say that we're available, this is a good project, we think it meets all the qualifications, but the CDEs have to decide how they want to award their allocation, because a future allocation is dependent upon their performance with the allocation that they're given.
Can I ask a question? If we do this hypothetically, because I, I'm, I'm trying to figure it out from, from the Housing Authority, because you're going for a tax credit, okay. The Housing Credit, we go for 4% and 9% tax credits.
These are different.
So I, I, I realize it's somewhat different, but you have to have a certain percentage if you're doing a tax credit?
There's no housing component, again, you're getting awarded on this. And so what this is, is from a, from a standpoint, the, the allocations are generally getting awarded to a bank, and the bank is getting a tax break. That's where all this money's being generated from. They're getting an allocation of a tax credit for financing these projects.
Because of these issues that we have that meet that criteria?
Right.
Okay, go ahead Sally, I'm sorry, I've been trying to get my brain out of it now.
It's, it's, again, we were asked to provide the simplified version.
You've got, you've got 10% of what we looked at.
Yeah.
10%.
So my question still is, what makes, what makes, why should we think that we can work as fast as the kind element of, I mean, we've got, from now till the end of June, and then they make the allocation, that six weeks, we're, if you, we're talking layer upon layer upon layer, but they're just, I mean, I didn't fall off the turnip price.
Yeah, but it's not Congress that's making it.
Right, and the allocations coming out from the entity, they're already set up to receive these. These are major financial institutions, some of the large CDEs, the nationwide that get them are.
Capital One, US Bank, Wells.
So these are major financial institutions that receive the tax credits. And then what you're seeing there is sort of that notification is, essentially, June and July, they're conducting, for lack of a better term, you know, that they're, they're, they're awards contests. They're deciding who they're gonna go to, they're trying to negotiate preliminary terms, and then we're spending July through December largely documenting it up. We are, we're essentially, and there's not much, to be honest, by way of negotiations, because they've got so much requests. They're gonna give you a term sheet, say, this is what we're willing to do, this is what it says. There's not much by way of negotiation, you're sort of getting.
That they choose, that you're gonna get.
And we started this. What does the city have to do? Just pass a resolution saying, we, we're okay with this being used, because it doesn't sound like we're involved in this at all?
Well, what happens is, I'm gonna lose. And we, and we've started this last fall, and so we've been kind of had our toe in the water, and then over the last couple of months, it's really picked up. What would happen with the funds, and I think that's really important, is the funds would come in, and as Jason mentioned, you have these CDE entities that have the allocation. They have certain program goals. And so they pit projects that match up with their program goals. And we've been shopping it, and there are folks who have indicated that, yeah, we have certain goals that would match what you're trying to accomplish. Whoops. And so if you get the funding, then what you, then one of the things that we would have to do is, we would have to create a public benefit board. And basically, that's an entity that would oversee where this money goes. And what we've done is just identified some potential uses. And so really, it's a matter of taking money. Normally, what happens, the award would go to a developer, the developer would get the money, put it in his pocket, helps his return. What we're doing for the project is, we're taking, in a sense, that equity and re-leveraging it, and trying to get additional funds within that target area. So if we got something for the Hotel Conference Center, it would be within that general area. And so these are just some possible opportunities in terms of, because the nice thing here is, everybody is struggling in terms of, I don't have the resources, I don't have the money. The idea with this program is that now you have a source of revenues, you have some money, and the question is, what do you do with that money to kind of leverage it and address some of the impacts in that particular area? So for instance, around the Hotel Conference Center, you've got the TOD site going in, but what are the sidewalks like going up to it? What is the lighting for the people in the neighborhood in terms of them getting there? There's a tremendous number of programs being done at Anshu's, and there's possibility where we could leverage that. You know, they, they have really interesting program with medical students, running a free clinic. We could take this money and give that money to the clinic to help them run that program. So it's really, this public benefit board would be created to, in a sense, be the custodian of where this money goes.
Can I ask a question then? On the public benefit board, who would that be?
That would be, I don't have that slide. It, it, it would be a combination, it, it could not be city-controlled. So say there were seven people, it would be, it could be up to three people from the city, and there would be people from the hospital, it would be.
Depending on what direction you wanna go. If you wanted to do something that focused on education, we could have people from the school boards on it. If you wanted to do something that focused on medic, medical care, we could do something from the hospitals.
Well, if you wanted to do everything.
However, we choose to set up the board.
Do you have to specify one specific issue? Because could you do some education, some hospital, some?
Yeah, yeah, the more the better.
So the more diverse, then it would be?
Right, correct.
Okay. Yeah.
Well, what about the pedestrian bridge across to the VA Hospital? Would that be something that you could fund?
You could.
Okay.
And again, the trick here is, the more you can leverage it, rather than using all the money at one location. Because again, the better job you do of leveraging that money, a year from now, the city may go, hey, you know what, we have another project, and we wanna support this project, and they, and the first thing they would do is, they'd say, oh, have you done this before? What was your performance?
And this, this whole piece is sort of the new wrinkle on it. At the federal level, there's been some disappointment as to the fact that the money's generally gone to underwrite the developer, it's not necessarily gone directly back into public benefits. So in examining this with our consultants, this is something that Mike and the consultants came up with, we think is an interesting wrinkle, and it gets a lot of attention from, from those CDEs, because they've been getting beaten up for not providing enough benefits to these things. So that's what makes this an interesting story. And to your question about timing, the fact that the project's already underway is also huge, because a lot of times what was happening was, projects were getting picked, and they're, just like we've heard about federal grants, they want things that are shovel-ready. Ours isn't shovel-ready, ours is shovel-underway, and they like that. That's really good. This isn't a, oh gee, maybe it'll happen, it's happening.
Got it, Marsha.
Oh, thank you. Um, I didn't think you saw my head. You know, I'm really leery about things like this. When somebody says they're gonna give you money and there are no strings attached, I, I have trouble believing that. I, you, you've already said that there are layers and layers and layers of bureaucracy. Um, I, I, I'm real hesitant about that. I don't know what the strings are attached. Money's always nice if somebody hands it to you, but what, what hoops do you have to jump through?
Yeah, it would. It, it's, it's not a lot of bureaucracy, because when you get to the CDE who has the allocation, then the parties involved are basically doing a business transaction. And a lot of it's driven by taxes, which means you've got a lot of attorneys dealing with a lot of tax laws. But these things happen very quickly. Once they go, they run, and they get done. Now, the consequences are, if you say you're gonna do A, B, C, D, and E, and then a year later, they come back and say, what have you done? They say, well, you know, we had trouble getting started, we've only done A. It would hurt your chances going back again to the well.
You'll never get it again.
You won't get it again.
How long has this program been in existence?
Uh, 2000 it was created, and 2003 is when they first funded.
It is subject to annual appropriation in the budget, it's not, it, it, it has to be renewed every year. Uh, so, when we talk about economic development tools that are available to us, this is one that I think both sides of the aisle are very supportive of, they like to see go forward. But it is something that continues to have to be renewed every year.
Bob? Yeah, this, uh, we, we asked a lot of those questions that have been asked here in committee. And I guess the bottom line, my read on this, is that there is, there's layers and layers of bureaucracy and federal waste. But it's gonna happen whether we apply or not. And so, the question of, uh, you know, free money, um, the question I asked was, why would we wanna get involved with this, with all this bureaucracy and millions of dollars, and lawyers and accountants and, and record-keeping? And the answer was, we apply for grants that have that all the time. So, this is just another grant. And so.
Right. What's, what's different than possibly the Tiger Grant?
Right.
I mean, it, it's, these are things that we constantly are going for on the federal level anyway. I, I totally understand, Bob. And if we don't do it, here's a reality.
Someone else is gonna get the money.
Someone else will get the money and use it, and why cannot?
And it's our money.
It is, yes.
I just, one, one more really quick question. There is a statement here about the 2.5 million in cash, uh, uh, to support other community activities in the immediate area of the project. Define immediate area for me, 'cause you're, you're talking about Fitzsimmons Village. So, what's the immediate area?
A lot of it's gonna be based on the census tracts. And we talk about, one of the goals here is to address, you know, extremely distressed census tracts. It's not hard and fast to find, but a lot of that's gonna go back to those census tracts. So, we're gonna wanna look at those census tracts that have the demographics that the program's trying to address.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody have any problems? Go forth and.
We'll continue to keep you updated, wish us luck. We're sort of, in the next couple of months, we'll hopefully hear good news.
See what we can get then.
I think of that joke from the government, you know, they walk in and say, hey, we're here.
I'd say, uh, on all federal grants, everything, it's my line, it's like, there's no such thing as free money. The, uh, the, the, the piece is tough.
Annual membership for park, or for recreation centers in Quattag. And you've got about 10 minutes.
I'll go quick. Good evening, Council. Uh, you had asked for some information on family passes that are offered by Recreation Division of Prose. So, I've given you some information for, in the backup. Wanted to go through some of that information for you more specifically. Um, we offer essentially two types of family passes. One at our recreation centers that are open year-round, um, and one that is at our outdoor seasonal pools. So, the first one at our, our year-round sites would be ACA back in Utah, which we, um, for years, you had to buy a separate pass for each center. Now, it's all one pass, and it's for one price. Um, we just did that going into this year. And, uh, we've seen some, some good success with that. Both passes are available to four different age groups. We have youth, which is two through 17, young adult, which is 18 through 26, and that's to address that, uh, growing population that Councilmember Peterson addressed in the last presentation, of those folks that are living at home with their parents. And then, there are adults from 27 to 61, and seniors from 62-plus. So, um, we are also going to be doing Free Fridays this year at the outdoor pools. So, wanted to remind you of that, starting not this coming Friday, but next Friday, provided it is, uh, greater than 60 degrees outside, hopefully. There are two ways that you can pay for the Recreation Center Pass. That's the one for the three indoor centers, Beck, Utah, and ACA. One is to buy the pass upfront, that's the most affordable way, if you can afford it upfront. And another is to pay via Easy Pay. Easy Pay is where it just comes out of your checking account every month, which, uh, we've seen an awful lot of success with this year. Since we've, uh, reduced prices and added these options, we've seen a significant increase in usage. So, uh, we have sold, uh, over 12,000 more memberships at Beck, ACA, and Utah this year over last year, year-to-date, which is up 17%. We've also, we're also at 47% in revenue year-to-date this year. And that is because we've sold more bigger passes, more of the, um, annual passes and the family memberships than we have in the past. So, we feel like our family membership is attractive. The way the, uh, outdoor passes work is they're just for a season, and it's for any pool, indoor or out. We, we, we figure, it's really targeted at the outdoor pools. But if you have rain or bad weather, you can use it at one of the indoor pools as well. And it just goes for the months that the, uh, outdoor pools are open, which is essentially the end of May, uh, depending on the pool, through the beginning of August. Our, uh, pricing, the way it works, the indoor membership, so that's an annual membership, your family is set up so that, uh, a family pass is two residents with the ability to add additional family members. So, the way that would work at, for example, Beck, or ACA, or Utah, is the first two residents would pay $330 total. And then, we'd be able to add an additional, uh, child for $87. So, that kind of breaks down monthly to about 13.75 for each adult, and $7.25 per month per kid, which is very attractive and certainly competes with, um, our competition. We looked at that prior to setting these prices for this year, and, uh, we felt like our pricing was very high, and now we feel like we're very competitive. For the seasonal, uh, pass, which is the outdoor pools and indoor pools, a resident would pay $155 for the first two residents, and then $41 each for each additional resident. We are going to not include Delmar in the outdoor seasonal pool pass for this year, just because of the uncertainty. We feel like our drop-in prices are fairly low. $3.50 for an adult, five dol, I'm sorry, $5 for an adult, $3.50 for a child. And we felt, we don't, uh, know exactly how busy we're gonna be. And we didn't wanna have a situation where we had lines waiting outside Delmar. If we find that that's not the case, and we can handle the volume, we'll certainly look at adding that in next year as an added value to our customers. That's pretty much it in a nutshell, if there's any questions.
All right, okay, Sally. So, let me lay it out. So, there's me, there's my daughter, and there's three grandchildren that are all teenagers. How much is that gonna cost me to go to Delmar?
Uh, the, three, you, your daughter, and three grandchild, and three grandchildren?
That are teenagers.
So, let's see, $5 for your daughter, so let's see. Doing a little math on the fly, uh, less than 20 bucks.
And, um, I go there at 1:00, and at 3:00, we close the pool, because we're getting the lightning, okay? I'm, I'm out, ready?
Yes, ma'am.
We're done.
The way we're set up, yes.
You can't come back?
No, if it opens back up, you can come back.
Okay, all right. You realize 20 bucks is expensive?
Mm-hmm.
It's extremely expensive. I, I, I could not afford to take, do that with 12 grandkids, which would be heaven for me.
Mm-hmm.
I couldn't afford to do it. I'd have to take a second mortgage on my house, okay? So, think about, think, think about people like myself, please. And, and understand that, that I, I pay, I, I, I do, I pay a lot of taxes to the city of Aurora, just like everybody else does.
Sure.
And we should, the, the price should not be prohibitive for me, just because I don't make a great deal of money, okay?
Understood.
Thank you. Oh, Bob?
These rates look reasonable to me. I mean, this non-resident rate for the annual pass is half of what you pay on trails for a membership.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'm not, I'm actually not arguing about these. But these are, these are indoor, and there's, for families, in an indoor pool, it's not, it's not the same as going to an outdoor pool, uh, where you can sit on the grass. And it, it's just not the same feeling, the same family kind of feeling. So, Molly?
What happened, I think, in part of wanting this presentation? I'm curious about what happened to, we used to have a scholarship fund, we used to have a impact fund. I know at times we've done various fundraisers to fund it.
We still do.
Okay, when does the community get to know about that?
Um, it, it's out there. It's, it's certainly, the information's available in our guide that we, we put out on a quarterly basis. And the information's available at our registration office. It's typically geared toward, um, not geared, geared toward drop-in activities so much as it's geared toward, um, classes and, and, and sports and those types of activities. We actually, we actually, um, we give away more scholarships than we receive funding for every year. So, we, we kind of subsidize it within the division.
So, for Sally, who's not even gonna come ask, because she knows it's gonna be really expensive, how do we get the word to the people that need to know the most? I mean, they're not looking at the guide, because they're thinking they can't, they're priced out. I mean, I, you know, you can't advertise a sale and still.
Sure. Well, we, we could do more. For, for example, at Village Green this year, we're advertising it on the side of the building. So, we, we could do more of that, and we'd be certainly glad to do that.
I'm thinking for your area, 'cause I know I've had to fight long and hard to get people to believe that Village Green has issues. But we certainly do need the benefit of financial incentives to help people exercise. So, you might ask for that for, when Morad opens.
Okay, and, and Morad, the, the price of the more.
$3 to get into the pool.
Okay.
And it's for anyone. Same with Park Lane, and then same with Village Green. $3 for anyone to get in.
Question?
Um, what about a single, if they wanna purchase an annual pass?
Um, that, I have that information. It's, it's not that expensive. A single for an annual pass for, this is for the, um, uh, for the, for the recreation centers, so the indoor is $174, which comes out to about $14.50 a month.
So, there is a rate for a single?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, I was asked to address family, so that's, that's what I targeted.
What was the single rate?
$174.
A year?
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay.
That was fine.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
That's, that's very.
I'm an adult.
Okay. Item from City Council, anything about NLC? Do we have ones coming up this summer? I think Brad and Bob, are you going?
CML?
To Salt, Salt Lake?
On Salt Lake City, NLC.
Yeah, NLC, and then.
Committees are meeting in Salt Lake City in June.
Right. And then, um, for now, or for, um, CML, the CML conference is in June. So, we know that. Legislative update, um, we have, um, Roberto, we have sent letters to the governor asking for the vetoes.
I was.
Um, so, other than that, I don't think there's really not much more. Steve assigned those and sent those. Um, Dr. Cog, Councilmember Roth?
No update.
Uh, Fitzsimmons?
No update.
I have no idea what Steve, he just wrote, told me that we weren't having a meeting at DIA, so that's his only update. Um, or EDC?
No update.
And Accelerate, it's coming up. Um, and Matt, did you talk to Morgan about E470 and that whole, so that they can put that on there?
Relative to the Sixth Avenue, the Tiger and everything, we will be following up on that.
Okay, 'cause I got an email from him today, was you and I, and I figured you know a heck of a lot more than I, so.
We'll plug into that.
So, if you can.
Absolutely.
And then, the only other issue is, is if somebody can follow up, um, with, with Morgan on water, too. If there's any issues that we may need with, um, Accelerate to take that regarding water. Colin, um, at Aurora, Accelerate.
And who is Morgan?
Morgan is with, um, Accelerate Colorado. He's the new person that, that was hired for them. Um, okay, um, light rail update?
Uh, yes, Matt gave us a wonderful presentation last Thursday at Transportation Meeting. I wish we had time to go through it, it's great. Um, right now, of course, uh, we see the mess, see all the things going on, um, let's see. Abilene will be closed to, tonight, tomorrow?
Might, tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yeah. So, they can run the line across to Abilene. So, um, they'll get that done. But they wanna open Sable when they do that.
Right. The intersection of Expo and Abilene will be closed tonight and tomorrow. Sable is now open, excuse me, uh, one lane in each direction from Exposition to Alameda.
Yeah.
So, we condition, you can't, you can't shut down Abilene and Expo without having Sable.
What, when are they gonna put the, the bridge over?
The Florida Pet Bridge is now slated for, uh, mid-June. And we'll get a notice out to Council for that.
Uh, just so you're aware, I did sign up, for those of you that have not yet, but if you have, it's really cool. Is that, um, nextdoor.com?
Oh, yes.
With, I have signed up for it. And mine, mine's Expo Park, which I don't understand why I'm Expo Park, but I am Expo Park where I live now. And one of the questions on there has been, um, when is the bridge going over, um, 2/25? And I responded on it, um, mid-May, so I will respond mid-June, so.
Delayed according to weather.
Yeah.
Has, has the rain really fouled them up in any ways, you know, when they were doing this big storm?
It's tough going out here with the, uh, with the storm surge. Oh, and then the other announcement is, uh, demolition should start either later today or tomorrow on the mini-storage area at Colfax on the north side where the bridge abruptly stops.
Yeah. I've gotten lots of questions about the bridge to nowhere, so really, who's gonna go somewhere?
There is a bridge, it's to the rest of the line, and demolition on those mini-storage units will, uh, is slated to occur, uh, tomorrow at.
And that's what's in the way now, the bridge continuing?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions, Bob?
Let's just mention the Isle of Garage groundbreaking, I believe, is June 4th.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
June 4th, 10 a.m.
Yep, 10 a.m. So, we're, that's.
And you'll be getting a, a key bike out.
Great. 'Cause this is some of the stuff that, for those of you that is on this Nextdoor, those are the kinds of things that the neighborhood just loves here. We had a Neighborhood Association meeting last week, that there was, what, 70 people there?
Close to 100.
100 people at a Neighborhood Association meeting for, for, um, the par stuff.
Par nine area.
Which I, I walked in and just about went, oh my gosh, am I seeing things? It was so wonderful.
Nextdoor is just wonderful.
It is so, I have to say, you guys, it is great, and the information I found out about my neighborhood, um, it's really cool.
We've used it for our Neighborhood Watch Program in Eastridge way before. Definitely started using it, but it's really, it's wonderful.
Well, I'm talking all about eggs, Sally.
Oh, yeah, we got eggs.
Oh, my gosh, I have all these egg people on my Nextdoor that are talking about various parts.
They're chicken.
Okay, chicken people, but they're talking about all these different types of eggs and the omega and whatever, I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah.
I learned all about olive-colored eggs by accident.
Oh, I'm, I'm, they're talking about the colored eggs versus the white eggs versus the omega, the, I don't, uh, anyway. I, I, it's fascinating. And they have a great app that I've got on my phone now, so, yeah, it's cool.
And the cost of eggs is gonna be driven up because of the bird flu.
In Iowa.
Um, we're really expecting eggs to rise.
Yeah, they, they kill too, too many birds.
Go to King Supers and get your eggs tomorrow, they're on sale.
Anyway, just, I think we're done, we've got 10 minutes.
We got Visitor War, we got Visitor War.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so, hot off the press is this new official Visitor War guide. For your.
That one I was reading in there?
It's one you were reading. So, it's things to do, places to stay, there's a list of hotels in the back. So, um, also, the Rocky Mountain Air Show is coming up in a couple of weeks, so.
Do we get discounted tickets?
Well, there's, the ticket, the ticket information for the public is on the back. So, you have to go to the Rocky Mountain Air Show website and order your tickets. And there's a combo ticket, $25.
I don't wanna have a kid.
You can take Bob or somebody, you know, so, anyway.
Says I have to have a kid.
I need two.
So, anyway, that's what's going on at Visitor War, I've got other stuff, I'll.
A lot, that's good.
With that, 'cause of time, but anyway, I'm happy reading with the Visitor War guide.
So, can I ask a question about Visitor War?
Can I ask a question about Visitor War? What are we working on as far as a destination event for us? A yearly destination event?
Well, the last board meeting, we talked about some ideas for a venue for some sports, indoor sports. So that would be, and I don't think Tom, you are there at the board meeting. But the revenue from the lodgers' taxes Visitor War gets is really going up outstandingly. But so, so you want a yearly event, let's say.
Yeah, yeah.
There had been discussion about a yearly event. But I don't wanna talk about it too much because it went by the wayside. So anyway, there is discussions about yearly events.
I mean, like a beer festival. Or.
Of course, the one you had, the music thing.
Amazing race.
Especially festivals.
Gary's got all these ideas. I mean, his mind is churning all the time about different ideas on what to do.